The plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of Sunnybrook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Grow calm.
T. Hill. Mr. Timothy Terrell.
Over.
Desiree Ambrose. Cassie Hill.
Here.
Tanisha LaShure.
Here.
Nicole Thompson.
Here.
Elisa Velas Davis here.
Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should do so when that item is up for discussion. Visitor statement will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor's comments. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Recommended motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 21st, 2024, November expenses, and October payroll in the amount of $1,282,486.26 as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShure, second by Terrell. LaShure.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C. Hill.
Yes.
Velas Davis abstaining.
Item D, communication. Item H, informational item. Item I, any board report?
I have a board report. Good evening. First, I would like to thank our stakeholders for allowing us to receive continued education to help us take this district from good to great. There's a saying that I heard that I first went to Q, which stands for Council of Urban Board of Education. If knowledge is power, information is the currency of potential. I'm receiving lots of knowledge, which in turn will elevate our potential. I attended several classes, which included making your district stronger through increasing your community involvement, how to increase your teachers' morale and make it a supportive environment for everyone, big board behavior, big moves, big results. This class focused on essential board behaviors that every school board member should embody to serve students, educators, and community at large. I was proud to see some of the things we have in place now in our district was talked about as well, like teaching our students about money. The only difference was that they said that we should start teaching them at kindergarten. This way, by turning it to heritage, they will be able to expand their understanding of how money works in the world. During the last keynote, during the last keynote speech, Kim Fields brought up the need to change how report cards are valued. I'm happy that we have changed how our report cards are done at Nathan Hale to give better understanding on how the grades were achieved. Last but not least, always remember your why, why you became a board member. Thank you once again for allowing me to get more currency to move this district forward. Thank you.
Awesome. Administration, Administrator Report. Dr. Neil Howe.
So my report tonight will be a two-fold. I'm just going to give you some brief information on right now, but then later half, the one for our administrative course, it'll be a little bit more involved because we'll be proceeding our IAR scores this evening to the board and to the community. However, let's first let me say one of my favorite things in the world is coming up, Gingerbread House. Gingerbread House gets its summer before. This year, we're going to do it at Nathan Hale because we always do it at Heritage. Look at that, Mr. Kent. I see glow. We're gonna move it over there to Nathan Hale. We will be there from 3:15 to 5:15. So we're excited. Okay, people, please come out because that's like my favorite thing like ever. Then this past Saturday, I am thankful to our board president, Ms. LaShure. She came out. She wore the turkey hat with Mrs. Saudada. So cute, so cute. And I'm sure you can picture so cute. And we have, I always have to say thank you to Living Grace Church, Pastor France in Lynnwood. Once again, he came out and helped us support our families, and we were there passing out turkeys this past Saturday. So it was, it's always really nice. They call it their blessing campaign, and it is really nice to bestow a small token upon, upon families because what some of us take for granted, other people, they just always break down into you. So it's just really nice, and we're thankful.
Dr. Owen Spring.
No, we're not reporting anything. Mr. Spring.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Increase or improve our ambiance for this levy presentation. And every year we get to this point, every year I follow passing out turkeys and gingerbread house with the tax levy. And so here we go, though. This won't be too long. Just a reminder that we are on the last leg of the journey of the budget and levy cycle, in which we, last month, we had the tentative levy that was presented to you or given to you via the board report, and it is unchanged from last month. And so tonight, we actually adopt the levy and the levy resolutions that are attached with it. And just going back, and then once approved, the levy must be filed with county by the last Tuesday of December, but we do this pretty quickly to make sure. Just highlighting, when we're talking about the tax levy, what we're talking about is the, the property tax portion of the revenues that were budgeted at September's meeting. If you look there, we have revenues of 19,861 projected, and then we had another 4.9 million with the bond proceeds that closed in July. So what we're talking about is the tax levy for a piece of that 19,861. So in the budget that was presented in September, we had an $8 million property tax budget. That is about 32% of our budget, right in line with our evidence-based funding. And so that's what tonight's meeting is about. And then what you see here is historically, how does our, this levy look comparisons to the past? Well, as everyone knows, there was a reassessment recently, and so last year in 2023, tax year, equalized assessed value of all the properties within the boundary lines of Sunnybrook School District 171, provided at 207. And then so the levy that was extended was 7.9 million. And last year, the inflation rate was higher. We can, we're limited, we're in a property tax district county, so that we are limited to the lesser of CPI or 5%. So last year, the levy was cut and capped at the 4.98%. This year, the CPI is less than the 5%, so the 3.4% will be the, the maximum amount of the levy that we received last year. So we always ask for a little bit more, and then what you end up getting is actually less than what you asked for, and so that it's in line with CPI. What we asked for was less than 5%, so there was not a true taxation meaning for here that needed to be had this year. So this year, estimated equalized assessed value is 213 million, and requesting levy of 8.378 million for the levy. And again, that's going to be in lines very closely with the CPI of 3.4%. When you get your tax levy, the property tax levy, it gets sprinkled among the various funds. Just a brief rundown, your Fund 10 is just your education. That's your instruction, your teachers, your paraprofessionals, and things of that nature. You also have Fund 20, which is your operation and maintenance fund, or all the lights and cleaning and custodians and such for that. Fund 40 is transportation. I'm going to back up where I was before. Most of the tax levy goes to fund the education, so of the 8 million, 8.378 million that we're asking for, $6,580,000 is targeted for the education fund, 735,000 is scheduled for the O and M fund, and then $620,000 goes for transportation. I M R F and FICA, those are the governmental types of taxes for payroll that we incur. So 80,000 and 125,000 for each of those respectively. You're not allowed to levy for your capital projects, which is why, you know, you've, you've heard me recently talk about we passed bonds, or maybe there's a transfer from one fund to another. And then we can also use evidence-based funding and other funding sources to help fund our capital projects, but you're not allowed to levy directly into Fund 60, which is capital projects. So that is zero. Working cash is just kind of your, you know, just your checkbook reserves, 95,000 would go to that. Tort covers all your insurance, your property, your workman's compensation. That's $83,000 of that levy. And then the final remaining part, life safety for all our alarms, or fire alarm inspections, anything that comes up, our monitoring, things like that, the fire extinguishers that we had, you know, tested and so forth. So that is where the 8,378,000 levy that we're asking for is going for. And then you have Fund 30, that's debt service, that's separate from the actual tax levy, which is budgeted for 675,074. We've always done this part, talking about the fund balances. It's now a part of the ball we have to present this, but Sunnybrook has always been very good about full transparency and disclosure. Hey, this is where we're at. This is what we have. So what you see is that we started with the cash balance in that second column from the left, balances of July 1, 2024. We have a total fund balance of 14,205. You know, it's right in that sweet spot. It's not too great. It's, it gives us some cushion and for a rainy day, yet it's not too high. And then you have our budget and revenues for 2024, and where, and then FY24, the surplus deficit, where we project to be. And then the last column is where we kind of figure where we're going to end as of June 30th, 2025. And what you see is that we should have a balance of roughly 16.6 million, which seems a bit high, but what you gotta remember is that we have, when we floated the bonds, it's to pay for capital projects the second half, and actually more than the second half, which will recur starting the spring and then the summer. So the fund balances that we currently have there, the 16.6, they're going to go back down to probably the healthy 13, 14 range once we get through this last round of, I shouldn't say last round, but this next major phase of capital projects, upgrading the heritage, this section, which is still kind of in its original form. So that's just kind of where we are. And just to let the taxpayers know, we're, you know, doing everything we can to be, to be very responsible with the taxpayer money to fund and provide the best education possible for the students at Sunnybrook School District 171. What you see here, I am not expecting you to read this. I know I sure can't. This is in your packet. However, what this is, is the certificate of tax levy. I just wanted you to become familiar of it, with this. This is what gets filed with the county, and these are, represent the numbers that you saw on the earlier slide of the 8.3 million dollars and then spread among the different funds. This is what that form looks like. And, you know, just really can't thank the residents and businesses of Lynnwood and Lansing, just can't thank everybody enough for its great educational support, to provide the activities and resources that we have for our students. And so I want to thank everyone there. That will conclude this presentation, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And two, we have two, two more informational items. I might as well just knock them out right here. And one is, so, you know, property taxes, you know, what are we doing? Obviously, we, we watch our money very, very closely, but you know, what are we looking for? Alternative sources of funding? Absolutely. So very, very, very happy to announce that with the last round of the ceiling and lights projects that we did at Nathan Hale, Com had offered an energy incentive grant for which we were able to apply for. And, ooh, boy, yeah, that was an application, let me tell you. But we did receive a check for $77,000 to help pay for, you know, the capital projects going on here at Sunnybrook School District 171. And then we're constantly keeping our eyes open for possible grant opportunities. We also have now filed with the, our local regional office of education, the school maintenance grant for $50,000. So we are trying to find funds other than just the taxpayers. Also, on final, third thing on, to share with you tonight, is one of the resolutions is the property tax relief grant, which has been on our annual radar ever since this was presented, but we have always been further down on the list. Literally one year, we were the next school district in line to receive a property tax relief grant, but all the school districts above us had, did in fact apply for it, and so we did not get that. So I am happy to announce to you that we are now within the bucket of schools scheduled to get the property tax relief grant for all the taxpayers in Sunnybrook School District 171. So when that motion comes around, I strongly encourage and ask for you to pass that. And what that does is it gives the superintendent authorization then to submit the property tax relief grant to the state of Illinois for tax levy for 2025. And that brings in, you know, some other, just paperwork and such, but very, very well worth the effort. So I'm very, very happy to announce to you this year that we do qualify for that. So that is the end of my presentation for tonight. Thank you all so much.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Ms. Cambridge.
I always have something to say. Okay. Good day, good people. How are you?
Good evening.
All right. So I'm going to go back and then I'll go forward. Okay. Last time, since the last time we met, we did celebrate our family literacy night, early November. The family, this family literacy night was, was bittersweet because it was Ms. Brady's last one. Ms. Brady has been putting on these family literacy nights almost 30 years with the district. We had the largest crowd come out mostly because so many people heard that it was her last one and they wanted to come and support. We were excited to see all the people here. But we understand, and sad to see her go, and we understand all good things have to come to an end. And so we wanted to honor and appreciate Ms. Brady for her time here and her service and dedication to Sunnybrook School District, and let her know that the literacy night was a huge success. Last week, the student council put on their annual spirit week, and pep rally. The spirit week was a great way for the students to express their creativity through their clothes, since they wear uniforms every day. We had some real characters show up for character day, though. So Steve Harvey came, Mario from Mario Brothers was here, the Oompa Loompas were here, and Papa Smurf showed up. So it was fun times. During the pep rally, all clubs and athletics were acknowledged and celebrated. The new drum line was able to get their, give their first performance, the cheerleaders, the palms, the ritmo dancers. The students had a great time cheering on their friends, and it's always a good time to see how many activities we actually have going on at Heritage. So pep rallies are always fun times. And then what was also the, the first day for our first boys' basketball game. In house news, Doasty had their annual Friendsgiving event last week. They had catered food and games for families. There were a lot of people that came out. The Doasty supervisors did an amazing job, as well as the house leaders who participated. It was a DO good time. We will be having our second annual, I'm, I'm sorry, our second quarter house day this upcoming Wednesday, where we'll be pausing curriculum so that we can engage students in enrichment activities, team building, and collaboration within the houses. That this house day, leaders will be introducing new cheers to the school to build onto their legacy. In support of the seven mindset curriculum, Atanuda will be exhibiting our live-to-give mindset for house day. They're all scheduled to walk over to Nathan Hale and assist in classrooms and cleanup projects, and bring the house system to inspire our elementary students. So that'll be fun times as well. Heritage Excellence and Student of the Month recipients will be announced for the month of November, this upcoming Friday. Student council will be putting on their fall dance this Friday from 3:00 to 5:00 in the commons for 6th through 8th grade only. There is a $3 admission, and concessions will be sold. We will be having, I'm fast forwarding to December because I won't see y'all before this, okay? We'll be having our winter musical on Friday, December 6th at 5:00. I hope you guys can come out. Our choir and our bands, all of the bands, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, beginning jazz, and the new drum line will be performing, as well as the ritmo Latin Dance Group. Our Lego Robotics team will also be heading to competition on this, on Saturday, December 7th. Go ahead, Chloe, girl. We will be, just to give a shout out to Chloe, who's over here in the audience. She's running, she's helping to run that whole Lego Robotics team with Miss Man. They're doing an amazing job. We'll be hosting our Newberry Bowl here at Heritage this year in the library on December 12, on December 12th, well, where I'm manifesting a win. So then there that is. Remember, happiness is a choice. Have a super fantastic day.
Wait, Ms. Cambridge.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You said December 6th for the winter dance.
No, the fall dance.
Fall dance.
Fall dance is actually this upcoming Friday.
Okay.
The, so winter musical is December 6th. Yes, that's where the band and the choir and ritmo be performing.
December 6th at 5:00.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Mr. Kent.
Oh, good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
I love following Ms. Cambridge. I think that she started back to go forward, so that means I'm gonna start forward and go back. Just to let you know, our Macy's Day, our Macy's Day for peer parade was today. And the reason that I bring that up is because you remember last year, I was talking about a Macy's peer parade between Ms. Johnston's Echo students and Ms. Contino's Gen Ed students coming together just to let our kids know that the world is bigger than your space, that we have to have tolerance for everyone. So we did our peer parade today, but the beautiful part is they continue to work to grow it. So on Wednesday, the Nathan Hale students will go with their peer partners in Ms. Johnston's class to the Echo Educational Center, where they will have another parade, much larger, more classrooms involved, and just to kind of show our students that again, this world is bigger than the space that you're standing in, and it's big enough for all of us. So that is very exciting. We also will have tomorrow, if you have something or some time in your schedule, we will have our mad science day, part one. Remember, we started this lab here in January? Well, it's, it is here again. We have two parts. This is part one. Tomorrow, all day, all science our kids will be immersed in, and we are looking forward to it. So you should drop by if you have the opportunity, get yourselves involved in something, and watch this fun take place. Because the most important part, I think Ms. Davis had said it when she was reporting, the idea is that the world is such a large and wonderful place. We have the wrong idea about science, about math, about reading. It's all around us all the time, and that's what we hope to show our students. Now, then Ms. Cambridge had already mentioned, we had Ms. Washington and the Purple House. They'll be coming over on, on Wednesday, I believe it is. And, oh yeah, we got plenty of work for hands to do, so I'm looking forward to it as well. I know Ms. Washington has been working hard, and just the idea that we are trying to show our kids what it is like. It doesn't cost money. It costs effort to give back to what has been given to you, and to show our students, our youngest students, that, hey, guess what? I walked through here and you can do the same thing. Looking forward to it. Now, I'm going to go back for just a second. Ms. Terrell, I'm going to give you one of these. It's just two pages, but I want to share it with you because as we reach back into the last week, as we reach back into last week, we had an anti-bullying assembly that really went very, very wonderful. It was put on or sponsored by Helping Hands of Illinois. They sponsored the presentation. We had Coach Paul Parpet, Hall of Fame coach there, Brandy Phillips, author of Don't Be a Bully. And we had, we were able to, because of the district, get all of the fourth graders the book, so they had read the book, they were in tune with it, and the bottom line was, it was just very good. We had Langston Henderson, who you'll see up in the right-hand corner. That, to me, I just had to put his picture in there because I have never seen this young man come out of his shell like he came out that day. And at this point, where you see the celebrity impersonator put on his Michael Jackson jacket, that's the sequins jacket, that's the sequins jacket that he is wearing. I didn't know that we would get Langston off the stage, but it was wonderful. He's been smiling ever since. So again, just to show you, it's all about exposure, 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 and there is a niche for everyone. And then finally, a back page, Thursday, we followed that up with Ms. Cambridge gave kudos, as should be, for Ms. Brady because we love her to death. I've said many times, never thought we would find someone that is in the Ms. Brady mold, and we found one that's in the Ms. Brady mold because Ms. Angelo was absolutely outstanding. So we did literacy night. Reading is sweet, was the theme. And again, our parents are wonderful. They came out, they took time with their kids. Everybody had a blast, and we all left tired, as we should each day. So it was just a good thing. Otherwise, have a good night. Thank you.
So we're gonna change things up for a quick second. That'll be at last. You guys could present now.
Okay.
And then Mr. Gallon, we did not forget about you. We're gonna stay the best of the last.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pfizer. I'm here on behalf of Dupont County Diagnostics. Just passing out some folders so that you guys can have it. Today, I'm here to talk about the importance of testing for respiratory illnesses that includes influenza A and V, RSV, and COVID-19. So it's, it's gonna be sharp, and it's gonna go overview of the importance of testing from that one. So everyone, or most of them, got the packet that includes some articles, some news articles, some data from IDPH and CDC. This is like the most recent data, which shows you the rise in cases for influenza A, V, RSV, and some COVID-19 cases. Now, the numbers that you see in front of you, they are not 100% accurate because unfortunately, even though they, the CDC and the IDPH try to keep track of the numbers, many people that are sick many people that are sick, they do not test for either COVID, flu, RSV, or they do not report the test to any medical authorities, which makes it for the IDPH to keep track of the numbers. So this is why it's very important for us to test and, you know, find, like, report it to the authorities to find out what's actually going in our city right now. Um, now, as you know, this is like fall/winter season and with the holidays coming up, with a lot of gatherings and indoor activities, it's the time for illnesses or respiratory illnesses. So that's why it's very, very important for especially schools and workplaces to get tested for influenza A, V, RSV, COVID-19. Because a lot of times when someone's sick, they still come into work or they still come into school, and there is a higher chance of, you know, like others getting infected because of them. And that's why we urge you to get tested for all of these illnesses. Um, and that's why you can self-isolate or, you know, um, be in quarantine for a couple of days and then get back to school or work. Now, according to IDPH, since school has started in, in August, September, there has been a surge in cases for COVID-19, flu, and RSV. And that is the reason they want us to either get vaccinated, get tested, or pay a lot of attention to the symptoms that we are, uh, getting. So that's all I wanted to put forth, that it's very important to get tested for these illnesses. And, um, the services that we provide, there's gonna be no cost to the school district. So pretty much that's it. Thank you so much for your time, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
No problem. Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
As I say, our temperature, we are, um, a cold and traditional time of the year where we go from 80 degrees to 70 degrees, 30 degrees, back to 30 degrees. Nope. So, but a lot of times what happens is that we have a lot of little ones and our own staff that come to school, they're not feeling very best. Um, and sometimes people do not always practice the world health code of covering your mouth or doing something so you don't have to check out anything. Therefore, putting your jersey on someone else. So what we've had is people have concerns, because their parents express some concerns about kids coming through not feeling the best and then parlaying that to their child, therefore their child parlay's to their family members. So we have found an organization that is willing to come in and test. Everyone is not about testing, this is not a mandate, where we have at least, um, secured and facilitated or individual to no charge to the district who is willing to come in and test people, see if they have the flu, if you have COVID. It's going to happen. People is there to be with us for a while, but people need to know. And so we will just secure the organization that's willing to come in and do this. So that's what that presentation was about, to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves to the community.
Having said that, this Mr. McGowan, Dr. Losniak at time.
Dr. Erica and Dr. Mike. I'm open, I can slide.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So as this time of year, just like Dave's got his levy at this time of year, we always have our report card data at this time of year because this does, uh, get released, uh, roughly November 1st, it's late October, early November. We want to share this data with everybody. Uh, this presentation will be online tomorrow on our website. So for anybody watching at home who doesn't catch it or anybody wants to review it again, it will be up there, so hold this. Go ahead and run on through this. Uh, so obviously, we are looking at data from last year, you know, stuff like that. But the first thing we always have to look at before we dive into the report card is the Equity Continuum Journey. How are we as a district doing? Um, comparing our students, our staff, uh, demographically, um, in terms of data, things of that nature to make sure that our students are being treated equitably, not necessarily equal. Um, so, you know, very famous photo, um, you know, about the idea of how we make sure everybody, uh, can achieve what they need to achieve. So there are three categories that we always do look at, student learning, learning conditions, and elevating education. And everything is rated in a scale from one, we, it says one to four. It technically kind of is like one to 4.9. Um, but what we are looking for is anything that's rated a one, it's a large gap, room for improvement, all the way up to a four, which means you're on target, uh, very little, uh, things we need to do to improve. That's where we want to be. So how are we doing overall? The good news is with this, we have gone up in every category since last year. Um, this is actually the highest we've scored, uh, since the Equity Continuum Journey has started, uh, three years ago, this is the third year of this. Um, as you can see, we do have some gaps, and we're gonna show the breakdown of this year in just a second. But I think it is something worth celebrating that we are moving the way we need to, and we are moving up. So looking at our categories, first one is kids readiness. So these are incoming kindergartners that are all tested. Um, this is, to be perfectly honest, all cards on the table. It is all, if we are scoring a four there, that means basically all of our kindergartners are ready for first year. So that is very traditionally a very low score. Um, so nothing to fret there, and I don't want anybody panicking when they see that. Um, I R S, uh, well, obviously for us, it's just the I R, um, and the D L M. We're working with 3.5, we're doing good. Okay, room for improvement, but we're rocking along. Uh, E L, progress to proficiency, that is graduating or moving our students on that are in our E L program out, uh, out of the program. And then, one of the areas that we have been growing a little bit each year, um, which has been great, is our eighth graders in algebra. Um, so basically, we're looking at how many are enrolled in Algebra I, which we do have one class, um, at the eighth grade level that is designated towards algebra that looks at the curriculum high school provides, and how many of those students are passing at, uh, what the state considers, uh, passing for Algebra I. Again, do we have room for improvement? Absolutely, but we are moving in the right direction. Then that's one, looking at the learning conditions. These are some numbers to really be proud of as a district. Um, our expulsion rate, basically through the math, you know, they just were, where we need to be, we're not expelling our students. Um, out-of-school suspensions, that number went, the number went up because our suspensions went down. So want to make sure we have that differentiation in there. Um, same thing within school suspensions, suspensions did go down, um, which caused that number to go up. And our student attendance has been improving, um, as Ms. Greens talked about over and over again, in terms of what we've done with our attendance and our attendance committee and things that her, committee has done a great job of educating our families and things of that nature to improve our attendance scores. And then our last category, or no, sorry, we're slowing down a few, sorry. Um, this is related to the Five Essential Survey. Uh, what we're looking at, this is strictly response rates. Um, it does not looking at the data itself, it's just are people taking the Five Essentials? Our teacher response rate, even though that's a two, still got some room to improve, but that number has gone up. We have made the moves to get all of our teachers taking the Five Essential Survey. Our student rate, 4.0, our students are taking, that's three through eighth grade. Um, they do take that assess, or that survey every year. But our biggest area that we do need to continue to work on is our parent response rate. Just to kind of put it out there, we're getting enough data to hit the bare minimum for the state, but that's where we're at. To be honest, we're at the bare minimum. We need to get more parents responding and filling out the Five Essential Survey, uh, to get that number to go up. Um, so looking at, uh, some more data here, this is now actually how we, how people responded on the Five Essential Survey. Uh, first one, parent, basically, the parents and their feelings towards, are they involved in the district? Um, we have some room to grow. Um, involved families are, you know, it's that idea of perception versus are they actually, uh, helping? That's the next one, that are involved families. Influence on decision-making, that's same. Do the parents feel that they have a say in how things are going in the district? Students, are you working, you know, do you feel you're being supported in the district? Again, we're dead center on that one, some room to work. But through our S C L surveys that we do every year, we are working at ways to improve that. Um, and then the teacher-to-parent, uh, trust rate, our parents saying they trust our students, uh, teachers. But the key thing is, I do want everybody to just be mindful when they do look at this data because our parent response rate is so low. You gotta look at this data and say, who are we hearing from, things of that nature? So if I had to be a betting man, which I'm not, but if I was, um, if our response rate did come up from the parents, I do expect these numbers to go up right along there. Now, in our last category, um, this is about elevating our educators, basically how are, do our teachers match up to our students? Um, right now, educators, the student demographic means, are we employing staff and teachers that are a matching demographic to our students? Even though that is a 2.1, that actually has increased. That number has gone up, um, through the years. Next one, teacher experience, basically, are we hiring and keeping experienced teachers uh, in our district? And obviously, 4.5, we are keeping up teachers. Um, next one, teacher evaluations. Are our teachers proficient or exceeds expectations on their evaluations? Again, 4.5, it's a great number, you really can't get any higher than that, um, which is fantastic. And then the next one is another key one for us. What that's saying is, are our teachers certified to be teaching what they're teaching? With a 4.5, that answers yes. We do have certified teachers in our positions, which is something, again, to be very proud of. So that's our continuum, the Continuum Journey actually does not impact our school report card, but it is something that impacts it. It's not part of it, but it can impact how we do. So let's dive in and take a look at the numbers, how did we actually do this year? So looking at the four categories, these have not changed. Um, we have exemplary, commendable, targeted, and apprehensive. Um, as you can see, the cut scores did change. That top 10% did go higher. Um, so that, that field got a little bit smaller, but same thing with target. So basically, the, our, the lowest 5% of schools in a subset, that number went down as well. So that basically means the middle got better. But just so you can kind of see where those cut scores are. And how did we do in each building? So with Nathan Hale, we did score 58.18, uh, which is a slight dip from last year. But again, we have some things to absolutely celebrate, um, that you will see in a moment. Um, but that's how we scored out overall. And Heritage scored out at 64.64, which actually Heritage went up. Um, and you're gonna see some areas that helped get those numbers to go higher. So what are the categories? Again, these have not changed from year over year, so I'm not gonna go into great detail, um, because we are gonna dive into each one of these. But the one thing I do want to share on that right-hand side, you do see the three there with the asterisks. Those will become live next year. We were notified of them two years ago, um, that they were coming. And basically, what those artists here wear, the P to two, is basically how are our students doing in ELA readiness along with attendance? Three through eight, that's math, how we're doing in math along with attendance. And our, our last one with fine arts, are our students getting a fine arts curriculum taught by certified fine arts educators? The good news is, we got a little bit of a quick preview this year of how we would look if these were on the report card this year. The great news is, we scored high in all three of those, um, on the preliminary data. Um, so if we can keep on track, those are actually just gonna help our scores for next year. So you can see here, it looks a little darker. Trust me, if you see on the computer screen, it's not so dark. Uh, so you can kind of see the pie. Uh, it's exactly what we just saw on the last page, but now you're seeing the pie break out. Um, just to kind of hit some of those big ones, the ELA and math growth are 50% of that score. Um, proficiency, again, another 15%. Uh, but then if we add in a science proficiency, that's actually 20% of the score along with some other areas. Um, again, next year, this pie is gonna shift. Those growth, those growth pieces are gonna shrink because those other three categories are coming. So let's break this down. Okay, so we're looking at growth. So this is year-over-year growth. So I'm gonna use the example, student got 80% last year. How did they, where did they go from that 80%? Did they go up, how, by how much? If you can look, we did go down a little bit, this is Nathan Hale ELA. Um, we did go down a little bit, but keep in mind, there is some good data that's gonna follow behind this, so I don't want anybody to worry too much. But the growth did go down a little bit in ELA. At Heritage, ELA though, went up a little bit, which is great. So again, we're seeing some student growth, um, which, like I said, we, we've still got some room to grow. We're never gonna deny that at the moment, um, but we are improving. Math growth, again, Nathan Hale did slide back a little bit. And Heritage, just bad as coach. But again, this is in comparison to how they did the year before. Okay, so, which is gonna make sense of why I'm emphasizing this in a second as to why we shouldn't be so worried when you see those backward slides. Because now we're talking about proficiency. Okay, how are we actually scoring on the test? Remember, the proficiency score is a moving target, uh, because it is a curve scale. But we can see with Nathan Hale that our proficiency went up. Okay, so that's the one thing I want everybody to understand, is that growth and proficiency are not necessarily connected. Because a student who scored 80% last year and 80% this year, their proficiency could have went up, but the growth didn't go. So that's why I want every, that's why I don't want anybody to perseverate too long on the, that the growth being a little bit bad, because you're gonna see it's proficiency. We did make some, some steps out. Um, so this is actually now the breakout. So what you're seeing here, now, this is your meets, your exceeds. Um, but the key thing, these are some of the charts that we really need to look at and in many cases, celebrate. Because if we look at Nathan Hale, what we want to see is that, is the scale shifting to the right. We want to see more green, less red. Uh, and if you look at that chart, that's exactly what we're seeing. We're seeing less in that bottom red, and we're seeing more in that green at the top. And that's great. And if you can see, post-pandemic, we're right at about the best we've been. I mean, kind of tied in there a little bit with 2022, um, but definitely going the right way. Looking at Heritage, again, ELA proficiency went up again, and that's fantastic. And we have a lot of things in place, a lot of things to celebrate, a lot of staff to celebrate. As you can see, we moved up, but looking at that breakdown, that's a good-looking chart. That is exactly how you want to see those charts move. Okay? Um, granted, we're not back to pre-pandemic just yet, but that's okay. Because if you just look at the past four years, that's what you want that chart to look like. Now we jump over to math. Again, we saw the proficient, or the growth went down, but look at the proficiency. It's not stupid. Still got some room to go. We're, we're not gonna sit on this. We're not sitting on the fact that proficiency went up and almost doubled, but we are going in the right direction. Again, that chart is going the way we wanted it to. That's a, that's a four-year chart that we want to see. Looking at Heritage, again, a little bit up, um, in our math. But looking at that chart, I mean, it's, that chart looks nice. That chart looks even better, um, because that slide scale is working exactly how we wanted it to work. Now, science proficiency, eh, went a little bit the wrong way. But the key thing that we need to look at here with science proficiency is, if you look at what we're putting in place, where we are now doing science, K through A. We now have a full-time STEM program over at Nathan Hale. We are taking steps right now that that chart is going to go the other way. And that's what we really need to be celebrating right now, is we saw in those past couple of years that we needed to go somewhere, and we are putting the things in place to make sure that we are taking the right steps. Now, this is one we normally have data on, I didn't want to leave it out, um, because there is no data because, again, you look at last year, you're like, wait, there was data last year, where's the data this year? The reason this is redacted, um, and redacted, I hate using that word, but that's what the state uses. Um, if you do not have in this category 10 or more students that have exited out of the program, they, they just say there's not enough data. Um, so what this technically did to that pie graph is it redistributed. I think it's 7%, if I'm not mistaken, it redistributed that 7% to other categories because we didn't have the data, but... But this is also telling us as a district, we need to continue to work on exiting our EL students out of our program, which we've done. We put in a new EL curriculum, and we've worked out ways with our students to work on their speaking proficiency and things of that nature. So we have taken the steps necessary to move our students out of the program. And again, just putting all cards out on the table, so everybody is aware of what's going on. And it's not an excuse, I don't want anybody to think it's an excuse, just putting it out there, is we do have five years to move a student out of the program. But if we get a student from another district in year five, that's our responsibility to get that student out in that year. So that is something to kind of keep in mind, it's not us getting them out in five years, it's five years out of the program. So we are taking steps to never use that as an excuse, but just putting all the information on the table. Chronic absence, this is another one that we need to greatly celebrate. And again, we can sit there and say, we might not be at the pre-pandemic levels, but guess what? Find me a school that is. Since the pandemic, attendance has, in no school, I shouldn't say that, that's putting a fact out there. In most schools, attendance has not reached back to pre-pandemic levels. But if you take a look at one year, what we've done, chronic absenteeism, by definition, is a student who has missed 10 or more day, or 10 or more percent of their days, no matter excused or unexcused, they're absent, they're absent. And so, and again, we emphasize 10%. Sometimes you will see that number of 10 days, it's not 10 days, it's not 18 days. Now, if a student is here on day one through the end of the school year, it is 18 days. But if they've been, if they've enrolled less than 100, the whole school year, it's 10%. But that is an awesome number, again, Ms. Greens' team working with notifying parents, the messaging we've got out there, actually, if you read the scoop on Monday, you're going to hear about something that happened with some of the attendance team members in regards to what we're doing to help with that. And I don't know why that's in there. Climate survey, again, this is the Five Essentials strictly response rate. What we need to celebrate here, again, students, we are way above state average. I mean, our heritage students, four grade levels worth of students, 100% of our students took the Five Essentials. Nathan Hale, it's one grade, it's fourth grade. So we have 96.9% of our students, which I think that means we missed two, two students. But what we need to celebrate here is our teachers, our teacher percentages have never been this high. This is the highest they have ever been, and we can proudly say we're above state average, which is awesome. We are going to keep working on getting that one even higher. So how did we do? We hit the commendable status. That is, so basically, what that means, we're doing what we need to do, we obviously know we've got some things to work on. But all of our, and what's great about commendable too, there's not even a subcategory. So that being ELL, that means any of our academicities, any of our income statuses. We are not in the bottom 5% of anything in the state. So that is an awesome, we're working towards, you know, exemplary, we're going to get there, but commendable is a good place to be. So what are we doing to help with this? Since I've been talking a lot. If you want to talk, go for it. This is the longest she's let me talk down in her?
So, we acknowledge that we hit some deficits, and so we've been putting forth a tremendous, a lot of effort. And kudos to Dr. Lowe and Mr. Kent. We are doing science days, we have a new science curriculum, we have a new math curriculum. We did a lot of training with the math curriculum last school year, but we're looking forward to seeing some really great things this year because our teachers have bought into it, and that is key. You know, the first year you have a curriculum, sometimes it's rough because you got a line to work. But our teachers have embraced it and they're doing well. We're also looking at our new ELL writing and speaking program. I have to honestly say, I always forget about them speaking, so they have to be able to speak poetically and just vary on key. And so sometimes our kids have splintered skills with that. But kudos to Ms. Beck and Ms. Abandon and that team, because they put forth a tremendous lot of effort. So we have a new program for that, too. In addition to that, we talked about the attendance committee, we had teachers trained beginning, I'm not going to say we, Ms. Green. Had teachers trained at the beginning of this school year, and just the effort, the tenacity, which is going on. The principals, they review with their committees, and they're reaching out to families. We are finding out, why are you not here? Do we, why are you tired? You see, for us, it's just not about you being here, we want you here on time as well. So we are putting in tremendous, tremendous effort on that. When you talk about enhancing the SCL curriculum, you obviously know about our heritage houses that we are taking very seriously. But more important, that I want you to think that we've left Nathan Hale out, we have not. We do, we're doing some different initiatives over there, and we, Mr. Kent and I are starting to see a little bit of a payoff. If Ms. Vos can contest to that, the Nathan Hale that you saw last year is not the Nathan Hale that you see this year. And so we were keeping our kids in the classrooms, we're keeping them invigorated and just wanting to be there. And that's huge, just having our students wanting to be here. We are still working on our Grow Your Own program, if you don't know what that is, that we have paraprofessionals, that we are, we have substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, who actually, they're really phenomenal teachers, they just don't have the certification. So we're sending them back to school to get that certification. But with that, they've also committed a five-year commitment to the district that once they finish their educational program, they will not be leaving us, they will give us five years. So we're very proud of that. We even have teachers who, our own Ms. Furley, who was teaching health, we sent them back to school to get health certified. So we are investing in our teachers across the door in every way imaginable. Our preschool program, I love three, Ms. Greens, little lovely three-year-olds are back in the building. They are so cute, they're so cute, high maintenance, but they're cute. So we're catching them while they're young, and we're just, well, a lot of those kids, though, it's about educating the parent. Because our parents are young, maybe I'm aging myself, but the parents seem to be getting younger and younger and younger, homie. Just saying. So we're spending a lot of time educating them, helping them help their child. So we're very happy about the pre-K program, it has started out small, but every month it's growing. And that, for our kids who are ELL, that English is a second language, just coming into our program, they're being exposed to the English language, so we're looking at great potential with that as well. And then the last thing, strengthening parent partnerships. One of the big things about strengthening the parent partnership is our standard-based grading. We have really put some effort into this. And if you don't know, if you haven't seen, if you, if you look at our website, by the end of January, you're going to start seeing some of the report cards that we're going to be using next year. We have to find a way to help our parents help their child. Because we cannot perseverate on one topic for a long time, we have to keep moving. But that doesn't mean that skills should be forgotten about. So we have done the realignment with our report cards, we've had, we had a real, it was a small turnout, but we had parents who came out, they gave us feedback. So we're really looking forward to what the standard-based grading can do. Know where his parents, they're going to get real report cards for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, because I've heard from them, too. I've heard, but I've got to get my kids with the basic foundation. And that to us is a way to build a homeschool collaboration partnership. That is a way to us to have a more meaningful conversation with parents about how to make or how to take their child from good to great.
You did it perfect, that's wonderful. And I just want to say a thank you to our parents that did come out because their input was so valuable that it allowed us to take it to the next step and provide them even more examples as to what a four really looks like, or a three looks like, or a two looks like. So thank you to all of our parents and your support, it just made the process better, Mr. Kent, yes?
So grading is going to look a little bit different, that's what the four, the three, the two is about. But we need to let parents know, your kid can achieve. It may not be at the same rate or the same pace as the child next to them, but that's okay, everybody's individual, you will get there. And to that point, we have a step-up program, and kudos to Mr. Kent for listening to me, because I know I go off on tantrums, I know. But we have a step-up program going over at Nathan Hale, and the teachers are doing it. Over at Nathan Hale, we have our first advanced classes now in math. We know that math is a struggle for us, and a lot of times in the classroom, teachers, we spend so much time teaching to the middle and the kids who are a little bit lower, our kids who are upper epsilon, they tend to fall off a little bit, so we've utilized a step-up program. So in that case, we have like second graders who go to third grade for math. So we have second grades who go to third grade for reading. But we do that across the board, that's what our step-up program is, we're trying to meet all of our students where they're at. Are we perfect? No, but are we trying? Yes. And so, but back to what Dr. McGowan is saying, I'm glad we have some growth, but I'm really happy with the proficiency because I need my kids to show that they can do it. I do not want students who are robotic and just good at taking tests. I want them to have lifelong skills they can apply no matter where they go.
All right, now, so put on Bronco Deep Motion. K1, recommended motion to approve the renewal of Power School, the district student information system along with Enrollment Express, the district online registration program, for the cost of $25,988.91, as presented, motion.
Motion by LaShaw, second by C Hill, LaShaw.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
K2, recommended motion to approve a three-year agreement with Comcast for the district internet services at a cost of $1,705 per month. Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShaw, second by Terrell, LaShaw. Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
K3, recommended motion to approve the tax levy for 2024, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Terrell, second by LaShaw. Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
K4, recommended motion to authorize the superintendent to submit an application for the fiscal year of 2025 appropriate tax relief grant with the Illinois Board of Education, as presented.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Who's the motion? Okay, LaShaw, motion, and Terrell, second. All right, LaShaw.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
K5, recommended motion to stop a new 150K transformer and a new 500K transformer at Nathan Hale in the amount of $8,100 and $21,497, as presented, motion.
Motion by LaShaw, second by C Hill, LaShaw.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
K6, recommended motion to approve the snow removal contract with American Rod, as presented, motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShaw, second by Terrell, LaShaw.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes.
Any visitor statements? Recommend, no close session, recommended motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:30.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Terrell, second by Thompson. Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows, Davis, yes, 7:30.
All right, guys, have a great party.